Okay. Here we go. Alright, so. First one here, if we have implicit differentiation, that's where you have, remember the derivative of anything with y's in it? Do you remember that you'll take the derivative? And then you'll multiply by a dy dx. Okay? Remember that dy dx is the first derivative? And it determines the slope? And then what about the second derivative? What does that determine on a graph? Concavity area. Oops, that should be. Second derivative, which determines. Then one thing that I forgot to put on there, but remember anytime you have a term that has x's and y's, you have to do product rule. Or if the x's and y's are divided, then you would have to do. So take a look at your next one, your first question. What, uh, what term is gonna be product rule? Negative 2xy. And then remember, our goal is just to break that into the pieces of the products that are multiplied. And also, I would recommend when you do that, make sure for the 2x that you just include the negative with it. So I'm gonna do negative 2x. Alright, so term by term, 3y squared, what's the derivative? 6y what? Yeah, 6y dy dx. Okay? Negative 4x. And then because it was already an x here, we don't have to worry about putting anything extra. 6 is a constant, derivative goes to 0. And then for this part, this is where we're gonna have to do our product. So our u is a negative 2x and our v is a y. And what will u prime be? Negative 2 and our v prime will be what? If it's the derivative of y. 1 and then anyway. Which of course, you don't have to put the 1. Um, okay, so from there, we're gonna do our diagonals. Don't forget your equals here in the middle. So it'd be that plus that. So negative 2y plus negative 2x. Dy dx. Kinda weird to put plus and negative, so overall, that would just be subtraction. So I'm just gonna sort of. Okay, after we take the derivative, everything with the dy dx is gonna go to the left. Anything that doesn't have a dy dx is gonna shift to the right side. So what items are? Okay, and one more. Which, and what else? Okay, very good. Remember, if it has a dy dx, it has to be on the left. If it doesn't have, one, it has to. So I'm gonna keep my 6y dy dx here. But then I'm gonna take my negative 2x dy dx and I'm gonna add that across. Then for my negative 4x over here, I'm gonna add that across, so it would be a positive 4x and then a minus. What would we do next after that? So if they both have a dy dx, then I can factor that out to the front. Which means I have a 6y plus a 2x left behind. Equal to 4x minus 2y. And then from their last step, take that chunk, that expression behind the dy dx and just divide it across to the other side. So divide by 6y plus 2x. Divide by 6y plus 2x. Okay, then one other thing, obviously here, we're plugging in a point, but if this were multiple choice, what could they do in that to simplify? Okay, yeah, so we will plug in the point for this one, but if it was a, where you were trying to pick the equation, they would almost for sure take a 2 out of the top, take a 2 out the bottom and then cross it. So for example, you'd have your 2 here, this would go to a 2x minus y. On bottom, I can take out a 2. So I'd have a 3y plus 1x. And then they cross these out. Okay, now, if you're plugging in numbers, it really doesn't matter. But if you were trying to pick and answer, know that they'll do stuff like that. Okay, so let's also review the notation. So this is dy dx at any point that I want. How do I show that I'm plugging in a specific? Do you remember the notation for that? What do we put? Big line. And then. Now, for a multiple choice, obviously doesn't really matter, but just for. So then we'll do 2 times x would be 2 times 3. Minus y is a 2. Over 3 times y is a 2. Plus x. And then you could easily plug into this first version, you would just have to simplify it at the end, because it would be a little bit bigger numbers. So then 6 minus 2 gives us. Uh huh, yes. So 6 minus 2 is 4, and then on bottom, 3 times 2 is 6, plus 3 is. 9. So it'd be that. All good on that? Alright, take a look at the next one. Um, it says, let f of x be a twice differentiable function, so that f of 3 is 1 and dy dx is y squared plus y. What is the value of d squared y dx squared at 3? So first thing, let's look at, what did they give us? They gave us the, the first derivative, dy dx, and what are they asking us for? So how many derivatives are we taking? Just 1. So derivative of dy dx would be d squared y dx squared? And then what would the derivative of y squared plus y be? 2y dy dx plus y? Another 1 dy dx. Very good. Okay, then from here, I wanna plug in when x is 3. Now, look at your equation. There are literally no x's in there at all. So where can we get the rest of the point? So that we'll know the x and the y. Where did they give us the point in the question? Yes, this is the same as saying that 3, 1 is your point. So then if they wanted it at x equals 3, this is the complete point that they're talking about. So remember specifically for implicit differentiation, you need the x and the y most. So I'm ready to plug in, my x is a 3, my y is a 1, what other piece of information do I need to plug into this still? I know the y, but I still need the dy dx, is right? And where can I go to find that? Just plug in up? Here, does that make sense? So I'm gonna go back and find dy dx at 3, 1. And then I'll know all the little pieces that I need to plug in. So come back up to your original dy dx here, it's y squared plus y. Then it's 1 squared plus 1, which is what? 2. And so then I have all the things I need to plug in. So just to be annoying, let's do our notation. So this is the second derivative anywhere that I want. Now I'm gonna do the second derivative at my point. So it would still be at 3, 1. But then as I plug in, I know my x is a 3, my y is a 1 if I need it, and my dy dx is a 2. So it's 2y dy dx, then that's 2y dy dx plus 1 times dy dx is 1 times 2. And then what's that gonna come off being? 4 plus 2 is 6. Make sense? So sometimes they'll give you like a super straightforward equation. Other times, they'll try to make it tricky, but just try to think overall what you're doing. You need a full ordered pair, they gave it to you in a weird way. They gave you the first derivative, you just take the derivative one more time. Alright, go ahead and. Um, okay, so we had a couple of these on your homework when we covered this back in, I don't know, October. So what rule are you gonna need when you take the derivative of the left side? Okay, so those are both right. Chain rule, because what's inside the sign? Not just an x, not just a y, but x times y. So you're gonna have to do chain rule. So remember, chain rule, we're gonna take the derivative of the outside first. What's the derivative of sine? So it'll be cosine, and then my xy stays the same. But then I have to times by the derivative of xy, and that's where we're getting there. So my u is an x. My v is a y. So we're doing product rule in this part right here. Uh, what's u prime then? 1. And what is v prime? Okay, and so then from there, I'm gonna multiply the derivative of sine, went to cosine, kept the middle the same. And then I'm gonna times by the product rule behind that. So I'll have 1 times y and then x. Okay, equal to, and then on the other side, it was an x, what's the derivative of that guy? Just 1. Okay. Being that, what did we do next? We want the dy dx alone, but it's inside a pair of parentheses. Distribute, yeah, or multiply. Yes, that's right. So remember, I can't get the dy dx out of here if it's in parentheses. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna take the cosine x y and I'm gonna multiply it inside. Now, it's gonna look really ugly for one step, but then it's gonna get better. So I have cosine x y times another y. Well then that's cosine x y times y plus. Then I'm gonna take my cosine x y and I'm gonna multiply it by x dy dx. So now it's cosine x y x dy dx. Okay, then from there, what term needs to relocate to the other side? Now that they're separate terms, then there's no more. X dy dx is gonna stay, and then this is the one that has to move at the end, and what is it not? Yeah. Now technically, if you move this one here, you just have to move the one. So really, typically, I keep the dy dx on the left, as long as you get it alone. So I'm gonna subtract this across to the other side. So now I have cosine x y x dy dx equals 1 minus cosine x y. That's why. Are we good on that? And then from there, what would my last step be? Uh huh. So we subtracted that across, and then we're gonna divide by everything that's not the dy dx. So we're gonna divide by the cosine x y and the extra. And then from there, what answer we could? C might be missing something. Yeah. So for D, we want the extra y to be here. And then we want the extra x on the bottom, so we. Now, a lot of times, people will ask, like, can we cross out? Remember, if there's subtraction on the top, the answer says, no, that's not a thing. Um, alright, next one, go ahead and give it a shot. What rule are you gonna do on the next one? Product rule. So you have y equals x sine x. And we're taking the derivative. So split it up into your two pieces. And then take your derivatives and then do your product rule. Which part were you asking about it being chain rule? So, oh, this is proper. Chain rule is when you have a function inside. Yes, on this one, the chain rule was this part where we did the derivative of sine. Then we had to do product rule. So, um, what is wrong, or what do we need to do with this answer? Because this answer is fine, but it's just not there. Or wait, is it there? Oh yeah, which one? Um, which one? It should, yeah, it should be B. Um, and remember, like, for these down here, you can't pull an x out of a sine or a cosine. Yeah, that's not a thing, because you have to have the sign of some, so if it's inside a sine or a cosine, you can't pull. All good? Alright. Next one. Um, alright, so go ahead and let's do part A. What rule are we gonna need? Product rule, also notice there, he gave you the answer. Okay, so if you don't get this, you know that you messed it up. So go ahead and give that a shot. So you're doing product rule twice. Product rule twice. Okay, so when you're done, look up and try to find what I did. My first product rule. Okay, parentheses around what? Good. So you have two choices. If you don't wanna put the negative into your product rule, then you have to put parentheses here, or what I think is easier is just include the negative in the product rule. So if it's a negative x cubed, then the derivative is a negative 3. And then both of these end up having a subtraction. Does that make sense? But you have to do one or the other. Either you include the negative, or you don't, but then you bring the negative in by applying. Okay, so any questions on that? What terms are moving from there? Okay, so what terms have to move? Right now, they're all on the left. Uh huh, yeah. And then if they're negative and positive, when you bring them across, they're sign flipped. So we'll have 2xy dy dx minus x cubed dy dx. My 3x squared y is now positive, and my y squared is now negative. Okay, then we'll factor this out to the front, and then we'll divide by what? So dy dx, 2xy minus x cubed 3x squared y minus y squared and then over. Okay, if you put this, the instructions are to show that the derivative is that. What step did I not show? That like, I did it in my head, but I didn't write it down. Because they're pretty picky on, everything that you write has to be really equal if you put it on the slide. Yeah, I divided it here, but then I never got rid of it here. So little mistakes like that, just make sure that you're not going too fast and that you're not stupid. So the 2xy minus x cubed, that does have to be there, so that. Well, okay, so let's say that part A was worth, usually like, if I were guessing, you'd get 1 point for doing each product rule. So 1 point here, 1 point here, and then you'd get a point for your final. So if you did both your product rules right, you got 2 out of 3, but you wouldn't get the third one if you did something like that. Um, if you were just finding this answer yourself, I would say it doesn't matter, but if it says, show that, then I wouldn't do any stuff. Oh, right. Okay, but normally, you're just finding this yourself. Normally, they don't just like, give you the answer. You're proving it, you know? Okay, so let's go to part B. It says, find all points where the x coordinate is 1. And then write an equation for a tangent line at each of these points. Okay, so where do we find? They're telling us the x coordinate is 1. Where do we get the other half of the point? From what equation? The original equation, very good. So I know my x is a 1, but that's not enough information for me to have the whole point. So I'm gonna use the original equation to complete the point. And so then I would say, okay, well, my x is a 1, let me put in everywhere that I have an x, and then whatever's left over will be a y. So coming right back up here, I had x y squared minus x cubed y equals 6. And then 1, and then 1. So now it's a 1y squared minus a 1 cubed y equals 6. What would we do next? We plugged in our x to be a 1, yeah, so we did that. Okay, and then yes, we'll have to factor, because if you've got a y squared and a y, that's the only way to solve that. So I'll do y squared minus y minus 6, get everything together. And then my factors will be 2 and 3, which one do I want to be negative in the parentheses? Negative 3, positive 2. Which means that my y values are 3 and negative 2. So not only do I have 1 point with an x of 1, but I actually have 2. So I'm gonna come up here and say, 1 comma 3 is a y value and 1 comma negative 2. Which is more points than I really wanted, but oh well, we have 2. Okay, then it says, write an equation for the tangent line at each of these points. So that means I have 2 points, then I need 2 slopes, and I need 2 tangent lines. Okay, this is where labeling is gonna be super important. So let's do our dy dx at 1, 3 first. Now, you can plug this crap in, and it doesn't matter, you just have to make sure you. Okay, so we're doing 3 times. My x is a 1, so I'm not even gonna put it. My y is another 3. Minus y squared would have been 3 squared over 2x is a 1, nobody cares, and then your y is a 3. And then minus x cubed would have been 1 cubed, which is. Uh, and then what would we get on the top there? 0. Okay, well, that one worked out pretty easy. So then what would our equation of our tangent line? Y minus 3 equals 0x minus 1. Are we done? We got 2 points, so we need 2 tangent lines. So for our next point, we already did 1, 3, now we're gonna do it for 1. So we'll do our dy dx first. Sure. Uh, this part? This up here? Um, so when we plug in our x is a 1, our y is a 3, and I'm plugging into this the derivative that we got from here. Because remember, what are your 2 ingredients for a tangent line? Need a point, which I already have. And then I need a slope, that's what my dy dx is. So I did 3 times 1 squared, still 3. Times the y is another 3, that's where I got this 9. And then minus y squared was another minus 9. So that's where we got 0 on top. And then on bottom, I got 6 minus 1 is 5, but think about 0 divided by anything, it's just still 0. Okay? Um, alright, so then dy dx at 1 negative 2. Go ahead and plug that one in on your own, and then write your equation to your tangent line, and then we'll check it. So just follow that dy dx formula. Did I get it right? I'm gonna go, why don't they cross out? So the negative gets crossed out by the squared, but this negative needs to stick around, so just be careful with that kind of stuff when you're working it out by hand. So that should be a negative 4, negative 6 minus 4 more is negative 10. Divided by negative 5, my slope is up. Okay? And then from there, we're writing our equation of our tangent line. Um, so it would be y plus 2. Slope was a 2, and then x. Okay, also, on the AP test, they'll give you way more space than. I'm just. Questions on that? Alright, part C. Part C says, finds the x coordinate of each point where the tangent line is vertical. Okay, so think about, if your tangent line is vertical, what slope is that? 0 on the bottom, because it would have to be an undefined slope, yeah? So I'm gonna put vertical line as an. So we're gonna set the denominator to 2. Now, what if instead of a vertical slope, we wanted a horizontal slope? Then instead of letting the bottom equals 0, we would just let that. Um, it's not a vertical asymptote, it's a vertical tangent line, so here's the difference. A vertical asymptote is when you have a line that like, when you get to it, your graph maybe does something like that. That's a vertical asymptote. A vertical tangent is just when your graph kind of like goes uphill vertical and then keeps going to the side. That would be a vertical tangent line. Because you still have the tangent line, you could still draw it in there. But the slope of it, where you look at where that line is, is perfectly up. Does that make sense? Okay, so take the denominator, set it equal to 0. So I have 2xy minus x cubed equal to 0. Now, we can pick whichever letter we wanna solve, or what we probably wanna solve for. I would probably go for y, just because it's only 1. So we're gonna take our minus x squared and add it to profit. And then do what? Yep, divide by the two X. And so now I have Y equals X cubed over two X, what can I do with these Xs? I can cross out one, so how many will I still be less? X squared over two. And now think about, that's not an answer by itself, but I can use it as a substitution back. So we're gonna use this as a substitution back at that original equation, which is right. Okay, so look at your equation right here and let's plug it in everywhere that we see a Y. We're gonna plug this crap in instead. So it was X Y squared. Now it's gonna be X. X squared over two squared minus X cubed Y. Equal to six. Okay, from there, yes? Um, so you can't, so think about, we started with the denominator equal to zero, you can't plug an equation back into its own self or you'll just end up. So you have to plug back into the original ordered pair. So that that way it's a system of equations, you have to have two equations to be able to do substitution. Okay? Uh, what would our next step be here? Okay, so let's combine, what do you mean by that? What do we, what do we do with this? Yeah, I would, I actually would do the exponent first. And then think about, really, that's the only exponent, but what is that gonna come out to be once I square the X? X to the four over four, and so five X times X to the four over four. What's gonna happen in here? X to the five over two, and now what do you notice about your Xs? They ended up being basically the same power. I have an X five over here and I have an X five over here, this one I'm gonna have to combine. But if I have X times another X to the four, then those are the same type. So let's write it over here, so I have X to the five over four. Minus X to the five over two equal to six. Okay, you have a couple of options here, I would get rid of the fraction. What can I times everything by? That would make the fraction go away. Four, okay, if I times by two, it'll get rid of this one, but it won't get rid of that. So I'm gonna times that entire equation by four, just to get rid of all the fractions. So four times a divide by four makes that just a one X to the five. And then uh, what would this one come out to be if I do four times this divided by two? Two X to the five. And then don't forget, you do have to multiply the six as well. So the four times the six is now wow. Okay, what next? Combine, they're both X five, so I can subtract. So what is one X five minus two X five? Negative one X five. What do I do next? Divide by the negative one in the front, so now my twenty four is negative. And then if X to the five is negative twenty four, what's the last step? Now, can I fit root a negative number? Yes, you can't square root it. Cause that would be imaginary, but you can fit through it. Now, did they expect you to know what that is? No, this is fine, this is the answer. You can't six root it because it's even. So remember, because the negatives cancel out in pairs, you can, you'll always get imaginary if you're doing an even root on a negative, but. Okay? Now, let me also say, the end here got terrible, but you would have gotten a point just for setting the bottom equal to zero. You would have gotten another point if you had substituted it, even if you messed all this end crap up. So that's where like you wanna think about like, even though I may not be able to finish it all the way perfectly, you wanna get the points that you can for this. Okay? Good? Alright, next one, here we go. Um, okay, so we're gonna skip to the related rates, just so we can get in. A little bit of that. Um, so let's just look at the first one right here. Okay, so if you don't remember your F, do you remember? Find, okay? Remember, that's what you're trying to solve for, what's your G? Given. What's your W? And then E? Equation. Okay, if it's a hard equation like the volume of a cone, they're gonna give it to you off the page. Okay? Then remember for related rates, you're taking the derivative with respect to time. Which means that every variable is gonna leave a D T of whatever that letter is unless it's what letter? If it's not a time, you have to put a D T on. So let's look at this one. Says functions W, X and Y are differentiable. And then they give you the relation right here. W equals X squared Y. Then it says if X is decreasing at a constant rate of one unit per minute. Y is decreasing at a constant rate of four units per minute. Then what rate is W changing now when X is six and Y is twenty? Okay, so let's go through it one thing at a time, what are they asking me to find? At what rate is W changing? What are they asking us to find? Which is the derivative, so D W D T. So they want us to find the rate that W is changing, that's D W D T. Okay, then it says when? X is six and Y is twenty, so let's add that to our W's. X is six, Y is twenty. Okay, and then they gave us the relationship between the letters, it's like a random one, it's not like. You know, a rectangle or something, but they give you X, uh, W equals. X squared Y. Okay, now what are the givens? They gave it to you in words, but they gave you the information you need for the other two rates. X is what? Decreasing at a rate of. One, so what is DX DT equal to? Negative one. Okay, and then remember the negative comes from the fact that it's decreasing instead of. Okay, then uh, for Y, it says Y is increasing at a constant rate of four, so what's my second one? Uh, and what would I put for the other side? D Y. Okay, then remember, after you fill out your find given one, your goal is to take the derivative of this and then plug crap in so that you know it. So what is the derivative of the W side? D W D T. And then what is the derivative of the other side? I know, is it just an X over there? What's over there? Any product? Yeah? If letters are mixed, you have to do product rule. It's not, if it was just X squared, your answer would have been perfect, but the problem is it's X squared times Y. So this is gonna need the product rule. So my U is gonna be X squared and my V is gonna be Y. Then what's my U prime? Two X what? DX DT. And then what's my V prime? D Y D T. And then remember, your derivative of Y is just a one and then you're attaching it. Okay, so from there, we're ready to write our product rule. So it's gonna be this diagonal plus this diagonal. So X squared. D Y D T plus. Two X DX DT times Y. And then from there, we're trying to solve for D W T. D W D T and we know all the other crap. So my X is a what? Six squared? And then what's my D Y D T? Four. Y is twenty, so D Y D T, yeah, you gave the right number. Okay, D Y D T is uh, four. Okay, then plus two X, my X is a sixth again. My DX DT is a negative one. And then my Y is twenty. And then from there, uh, hopefully you have a calculator on. Um, but six squared is what? Then thirty six times four. You get twenty four. Remember, honey, do your little move surprise? Okay, and then two times six is twelve, twelve times twenty would be. And then from there, we'd be minus now. Oh, okay, now when you subtract. You have to subtract the bigger minor this minus the smaller, but if it's like this, we have to remember to turn it. Negative. Okay, hopefully. Okay? Good? You love it? Uh, okay, we'll just do the next one. Okay? Uh, ice sculpture in the form of a sphere melts in such a way that it maintains a spherical shape, very magical that that happened. Okay, then it says the volume of the sphere is decreasing at a constant rate of two pi. Then it gives you your equations right here, just like it usually would for the AP test. At what rate is the radius of the sphere changing at the moment when the radius is five? So fill in your find given one. And then obviously we see our equations or. Okay, ready? What will we find? D R D T. What were we given? Okay, so the volume of this sphere is decreasing, so that would be. And then a lot of times people wanna put D R D T because they see rate. But remember, rates are derivative. So we want the rate that the volume's changing is D V D T and then it says it's two pi. Yes, negative because it's decreasing at that. Okay, and then my when, I didn't really leave room for it, but what is it? Radius is. Okay, um, now think about, they gave me two equations. Which one will I use if I know this? Volume, so come over to your volume equation right here. V is four thirds pi R cubed, let's take the derivative. What's the derivative of B? D V D T. And then on the other side, do I need product rule? Why not? There's a pi and an R. So times the three down, what happens to the fourthers? Just a four, keep the pi, what happens to the power, drop it down to a. Squared and then? Yes, D R D T. Okay, and then from there, you're just plugging stuff in. We know that our R is a five and we know our D V D T is a negative two pi. So negative two pi equals. Four pi, our R is a five squared and then. Because the pi is in front, so think about like if you had two. Uh, pi X cubed, you would do the three times the two pi. Make it a six pi and then drop it down. Yeah, cause it's not like the constant alone, it's a coefficient. Okay, so then from there, five squared is. Twenty five times four pi is. A hundred pi. D R N E T and then divide the hundred pi across and we would get. What can, uh, we cancel out? Pi and then two and a hundred have a common factor, what is it? It'd be, so is it negative fifty? Negative one over fifty. Yeah, so remember, if you're smaller, if you're smaller numbers on top, then. So that would have been your answer to part A. And then in part B, it says, okay, well then what about? The surface area, how fast is that changing? Now, when this was on the AP test, these weren't separate questions. It was just asking you this. So you would have had to kind of think like, okay, in order for me to know surface area, I need to R know R, does that make sense? So now let's come up here to surface area, what's the derivative of that? Okay, so it'd be A pi R D R D T. And then what's the derivative of the S side? D S D T. And now I have all the pieces that I would have. But hopefully, when you took this derivative, you would be like, oh no, I don't have this yet, let me go back and find it so that I have it. And then from there, it says your R is a five. So we'd have eight pi times five and then times negative one. What is eight times five in the front? So that's forty pi over fifty. Which would be the same as what? Okay, it is negative, yes, and then on the answer choice. Is it wrong that they didn't put it, look at the way the question is worded? They already said, at what rate is it decreasing? So they're acknowledging that it's negative without. Does that make sense? So they're saying, at what rate is it decreasing? Well, then this answer is sufficient about the negative, they already told you that it's both now. Makes sense? You remember these things? Kind of, okay, it's five nineteen. Good, good job. Yellow sheets? Uh, there are a million left. And they're all up. Um, but yeah, I did on the calendar, we have. One, one, maybe, and maybe one on today. At the back. Shall I sign everybody? Good job, guys, getting prouder of you every day. Bye, see you tomorrow. You finished all of them? Wow. Good job, buddy.